No pressure. Just produce.
Good evening and welcome to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 24th, 2018. Councilors, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please let the record reflect that Councilor De Peña is present, Councilor Abdu is present, Councilor Payano is present, and Councilor LaPlante is present. Councilors, as you know, it's a process that for the first meeting in each term, I am present to open the floor for nominations for the chairmanship. Is there a nomination for the Chair of the Committee?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to nominate Michael Plant for Chairman.
His second. Motion has been made and properly second. Councilor LaPlante, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any further nominations on the floor? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please state the name of the person you are voting for. Councilor De Peña?
My LaPlanta.
Councilor Abdu?
Michael Plant.
Councilor Payano?
Councilor LaPlanta.
Councilor LaPlanta?
LaPlanta.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Pavel. Thank you to the members of the Committee. I appreciate your confidence and trust, and we will do our very best on this Committee to serve our city and to give the best information that we can to the full Council. So, thank you all very much. We have minutes. And I realize some of us weren't on the Committee last time we had a meeting. So, there is minutes from the date of December the 11th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion made?
Second.
And second. Any discussion? Here now is called the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. Thank you. Today is January 24th. We have new business. Yes, Mr. President?
Chair LaPlanta, we need to also vote for Vice Chair?
Sorry. Rookie mistake. I'm all nervous. But the good news is we got the minutes done, so that's good. Is there a... Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Councilor Abdu.
Motion's made?
Second.
And it's been second. And Councilor Abdu, do you accept?
Yes.
Are there any of the nominations? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. De Peña?
Councilor De...
Mr. Abdu?
Councilor Abdu.
And Mr. Payano?
Councilor Abdu.
Unanimous. Congratulations, Vice Chairman.
Aye.
Thank you. No extra pay for this one, Mr. Abdu.
I'm out.
So, now we'll get on to the new business. We have individuals here from the Administration. I'm just going to... Is anybody here to speak on the first matter, 1018?
I think I can. I was alerted to this by the Law Department. Charles is sick, so he's not here. So, just in... It's a very minor issue. I guess there was an arbitrator's bill that was a couple of years old or goes into the prior year. They had multiple bills that they paid to this one arbitrator, and there was some confusion that they... The Law Department thought they already paid it, and it turns out, no, they do owe an arbitrator $1,200. And so, he's asking for permission to pay a prior year bill out of his current year budget to take care of that arbitrator.
The only question I was... I thought we went through this once before. There were prior year bills, and I believe they were for arbitrators, and we did. We did a significant sum in the last session.
There... You know, it was a couple of months ago, I think he did have a bunch of bills that were outstanding. This was one more that just came through. So, that's about all I know about it. They brought it to my attention a couple of weeks ago. I said, well, you just have to get out to the Council, you know, the routine. But unfortunately, Charles is... Was... I know of some others, and he's out sick today, so...
Any time sensitivity to this matter?
I'm sure the person would like to get paid, but I don't know if there's, you know... Is he threatening to sue or anything like that? I don't think so.
Discussion or motions by the Membership?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question. So, this is for something that was done, an arbitration that occurred in 2016?
Believe... I don't have the memo that Charles sent with it, but it should be... There should be a memo attached explaining the circumstance. Just the person from his office asked me how to proceed, and so I know a little bit about it.
And this is just a question, maybe, to the Councilors. Does the... Is there a regular auditing process? Just because it just... To me, it just sounds a little strange that we have a bill that's just two years old.
So, the answer to your first question is yes. We have audits every year. We will... What's the timeframe on that? Usually in the late spring.
We're... The final draft was just approved, so I expect the final audit any day, and then I'll be contacting you and the Committee. What days would you like to review it with the auditor?
So, the answer is yes, it's an audit. And the reasons why we're even discussing this at this point is because you just can't be paying an old bill. It's an old bill, it means we have to... It's got to come before the Council. Usually, there's a budget, and in the budget, it has a line item which allows them to pay for these things. This wasn't paid for in the previous year. They've... Whatever the reasons are, became aware of this bill, something happened, and now, because you just can't pay it, because that bill... That year's come and gone, it has to come before us to approve the payment. So, the understanding here is that there is a bill. It's an outstanding bill. We can either not pay it. If we don't pay it, I'm sure this guy will not be happy. Who knows what he will do for... It's sick... It's not a lot of money. It's what, $1,200? So, we certainly can... We certainly can leave it here. We certainly can bring it up. So, it's a Membership decision as to how you want to proceed with it. And I fully understand, being the first time on this, that there's a lot of unsurity about how things progress, so it makes sense. Yes, sir, Mr. Payano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I think my questioning around that is, you know, I completely understand that we're dealing with something that should have been paid from a budget from a couple of years ago. I just want to get a better understanding on how this, like, sort of like, fell through the cracks. You know, I completely agree with you that I would... I mean, it's $1,200. At the end of the day, this person should have gotten paid, so, you know, we probably should move forward with this. I'm just, you know, wondering, you know, so, kind of like, what happened for this to... For folks to kind of lose track of this one?
So, Mr. Payano, I think there's a couple of options we have here. A, we can just table it. We can leave it here and ask Mr. Boddy to come here. B, we can set it up without a recommendation and allow Mr. Boddy to come before the full Council with a brief explanation, or you can call him yourself, or whatever. Either way, I'm comfortable with, as far as how you want to proceed, or the Membership wants to proceed. So, it's up to you how you want to move it. Either way, it's... It seems like those are the options.
So, you're saying that we could recommend that we move it without a recommendation?
We could.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion that we move this forward to the full Council without a recommendation.
Motion's been made?
Second.
And it's been second. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair? Mr. Abdu? Perhaps we make a motion. I'd be willing to do so, that we just recommend that Mr. Boddy, Attorney Boddy, send this Committee a note describing what occurred, or be prepared to be at the next City Council meeting for questions by Council Payano or any one of the Councilors as to why this $1,200 was not paid in fiscal year 2016. So, the motion's been amended. Would that be acceptable, Mr. Payano? Sir, motion's been accepted, and so, the motion is very simple. Now, we will ask Mr. Boddy either send... And I would recommend sending it to the full Council, because now is at the full Council if we send it from here. So, all members of the Council or show up. So... Any other comments or questions? All... Yes, sir.
There should be a memo in your packet.
It's simply a bill.
Oh, not that memo? There should be a cover memo attached to it?
Yeah, it's not very...
There's a request for us to pay it, and there's a bill to back it up, and that's it.
I'll be happy to show you after the end of the meeting. So, I'll call... I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. The next document is 1218 Appropriation Transfer Request. This is from Return Earnings to the Special Project Fund for the Procurement of Equipment Projects, $3.2 million, $3,270,000. It's put on Council Agenda by Water and Sewer Commissioner Brian Peña. Good evening, Mr. Peña.
Good evening.
I say that because we get confused with Mr. De Peña, who's here. Go ahead, Mr. Peña.
Good evening. So, for you, we have a request for a transfer from Retain Earnings to a Special Projects Fund. I've submitted a memorandum for your files detailing how we plan on spending the funds, if approved. If it pleases you, I can go over the spending in detail?
I think it'd be worth our while to do a broad overview of the spending.
Sure. So, starting from the top, we are proposing a transfer of $300,000 for design services for the Colonial Heights Water Main Project. This one is actual funds that have already been expended. We have not paid our consultant yet, and we owe them this money for an emergency design related to water quality issues in that neighborhood. The work has been performed. Currently, it's already been bid, been performed by the contractor. The contractor will be... They're slated to come back this spring to complete some final cleanup and then road service restoration. Moving just past that, we are requesting also a sum... This is probably the largest one, $2 million for On-Call Water and Sewer Services. This is not the first time that we've been in front of the Council requesting a transfer of this magnitude for the same project. This relates to the 2015 Consent Decree with the Environmental Protection Agency. There are a number of items that we need to conduct here within the city in order to meet deadlines that were put forth by the Consent Decree. Because we have not had a rate adjustment since 2009, currently, we do not have the funding in place on an annual basis. So, we have come before the Council on several occasions to ask for transfers for this work. This relates to any... Anything from sewer pipe collapses to, you know, adding drainage in areas that lack... Poorly drained, and they also help us address emergency work as it arises, related to typically sanitary sewer overflow, so backups into people's homes, basements, or out of manholes and into the roads. Right past that, third item is $300,000 for a lead service replacement. Currently, the city has about 130 lead services still in place, about 12,000 or so. So, just a little over 1% of the services today are still made out of lead. We are looking to accelerate the program. Right now, we have not had a standard program or a policy on how we go about replacing lead services and who pays for it. It's arranged from the city paying for the entire cost, the homeowner paying the entire cost, or, you know, we pay a portion, they pay a portion. With this $300,000, it is our intent to develop a policy in which we allocate a certain level of funding to property owners based on the property type and based on whether or not they're occupied. So, for instance, regardless of whether it's we're going to pay for 100% or 80%, whatever the maximum that the city is going to pay for, that would be allocated to single-family owner-occupied homes. The... Then, the second highest amount would be, for instance, a two-family owner-occupied, three-family owner-occupied, all the way down to a commercial property in which a city would not subsidize any of the cost, as an example. So, we haven't developed that policy. We know that we're... That if approved, we would have $300,000 total to address all 130 of those lead services. Then, moving... So, those are the three projects that we have in mind. We also have proposed a number of equipment purchases. The reason why we are looking to purchase equipment with cash is because most of the equipment life is, you know... Regardless of how long we keep it, it's not 20 years, so it makes no sense to bond for 20 years when the life of a piece of equipment might be five, seven years. So, we do intend to pay cash for equipment, as we've done all along. In this case, we have a number of pieces of equipment that are due or overdue for replacement. One of them is a 10-wheel dump truck. That is... The current one that's being used is probably as old as I am, and it's down a lot for maintenance, so it's of very little use to us. The intent is to purchase a new one, which would be more reliable, and then either repair that one to be used as a backup or surplus and sold at auction. We haven't made that determination just yet. Second one is a sewer flusher rotor. This is probably the piece of equipment that gets the most use in the city. This is going back to example where somebody has a sewer backup. This is a tow-along sewer flusher that we deploy in order to dislodge any buildup in pipes. We have one currently the city owns. It's the same one that we've used for the last 20 or so years and has been down for maintenance several occasions, including most recently when it was down for about four months. As a result, we've had to call in contractors to perform the work that we could very well do. So, it's just not a sound business decision to have only one piece of equipment when, in a period of, say, four months, you'll spend, you know, half the cost of purchasing a new piece of equipment. Third item are two pickup trucks for... Specifically for foremen, and that's to replace the aging fleet that we currently have. The intent with the current vehicles is to transfer them to another division within DPW. They will be reimbursed at blue book value to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Next one is a pickup truck with utility body. Again, this is... So, this is specifically for the Sewer Division. The way that we... That we... I guess the program we have in place for trucks, utility trucks, within the Sewer Department is, as they age, they get passed on from one... From one task to another task. So, for instance, we have one truck currently that is being used to carry brick and cement. So, it tows heavy loads. As a result, it gets more wear and tear. We typically don't put our newest truck hauling that load. Typically, it'll be an older truck. A newer truck will be manned with, you know, one or two sewer craftsmen. It'll carry tools and materials on it, but will be sort of a medium load. Then, after a number of years, in this case, our current one's about eight years old, it'll be pushed... It'll push down the line to a more high-intense use. And then, finally, the last one is a street sweeper. Our intent is to purchase a street sweeper to enhance the street sweeping program because it directly has an effect on our catch basins and our sewer lines. So, we feel, and Director Hackus feels, that by enhancing the street sweeping program, we can avoid a lot of the issues down the line with clogged pipes if we just get the trash out of the streets in the first place. So, our intent is to buy one this year.
I've got three questions. Thank you. First, in no particular order, catch basins, which kind of ties into that. Do any of these new equipment... Does any of this new equipment allow for the cleaning of catch basins?
It does not.
Do we have equipment on... Already in our inventory that will provide that kind of work?
We do. So, we have currently two VAC trucks and one... We call it a clamshell. So, one of the VAC trucks is aging, so it's not at the point where we need to replace it. It's not as crucial as these pieces of equipment. Same thing with the clamshell. The clamshell is probably one of the oldest pieces of equipment, but it's actually very robust, and we've gotten a lot of life out of it. We expect that we can still get a little more life out of it, but, you know, we will anticipate in the next, say, three years or so, having to replace that piece of equipment.
So, when is... So, is that started at all, the catch basin cleanups? Are you doing it ongoing?
It's typically seasonal, so with the better months. So, starting in the spring all the way through the fall.
Okay.
We'll typically suspend it for the winter months.
Second thing is, you're familiar with the Colonial Heights project and that unfortunate incident that had somebody's basement flooded with water. So, I just want to make sure we've got some assurances that whatever... There's certainly some lessons there, and I'm just hopeful that those have been heated and that we don't come across that in the future. Most of that, I think, is information to folks, because I don't think information was adequately submitted to the folks. I know that we did a lot of catch-up at the end to try to make somebody whole, and that's good, but obviously, we should try to not have that happen to start off with. So, I just wanted to call that to your attention. Hopefully, with all these new things that are going on, part of that's communication as well.
Yes.
It's hilarious. Last thing is the street sweeper. One of the... Listen, we need a street sweeper. Everybody's asking for the street sweeper, but one of the challenges is that the street sweeper typically just goes on certain streets. I mean, there are so many streets that the ordinance doesn't allow for alternate side parking for the street sweeper to go through during the non-winter months. So, is there any discussion or thought about maybe changing the ordinances around to allow for more streets to have a street sweeper go through the neighborhoods?
I'll be honest, I have not given much thought to the program itself and can't speak to that. I think that would probably be the best answered by the Director.
Okay. And coincidentally, he's here, so perhaps I could ask him that question?
That's very convenient.
Thank you, Councilman Glass. Thank you, Members of the Committee. Carlos Hackus, Director of Polite Works. The intent primarily of this particular equipment purchase is to also replace our aging street sweeper. Currently, we have three sweepers that are currently parked in there. One of them is mostly operational. The other two are primarily used as pieces... Backups for materials that we may need to repair. The third one is actually the one that's mostly operational, which in itself is about 12 to 15 years old at this point. So, the intent right now is to get our equipment, obviously, up to and a better stage. There have been some internal discussions about formalizing or better structuring the current street sweeping program that we have. However, whether we want to expand that, there'll be other discussion about whether there be additional equipment purchase or additional personnel that needs to be hired. Currently, based on the levels that we have with the equipments and the personnel, there's only certain amount of street sweeping we can do. So, the intent right now is to first replace the aging equipment that we have, and second, take a look at how we can more efficiently utilize that piece of equipment. We are aware that, based on the ordinances that we have with the street sweeping, it only allows for certain roads, primarily main roads. There have been discussions of hopefully expanding that to some residential neighborhoods. Nothing has come of that yet. If that does come into play, we'll certainly have to look at having additional equipment purchases. The fact of the matter is, with one street sweeper, there's no way that we can ramp up significant operations that we can do the entire city. So, right now, we want to focus on getting the main roads with the street sweeper and hopefully with future equipment purchases, either through the capital plan or through some other means of funding, then we can look at ramping up a more comprehensive and robust street sweeping operation.
And I'll end with this comment. Oftentimes, people... Residents believe that every street should be swept with a street sweeper, and the ordinance allows... Every street could be, but to be done properly and well, the ordinances need to be in place to allow for alternate side parking, because right now, if you can park on both sides of the street, the street sweeper can only go down the middle of the street, and it's not going to get both sides by the curb. And that's, I think, the issue. And I think many of our residents aren't fully aware what our current ordinances are and how... Even if we had a fully robust street sweeper in Fandori, it still wouldn't quite work, so...
And it is a sensitive subject, as you probably know, because it ties into the parking issue that we all are aware we're dealing with in the city right now, particularly now in the wintertime. So, obviously, the expansion of that program will also involve additional parking restrictions citywide to allow for the street sweeper to perform its work. So, multiple aspects to that discussion, as you probably know.
Any other comments by Members of the Committee? Mr. Abdu?
Thank you. So, I had a few questions, so please indulge. Somewhat, you know, we had the new Council and just wanted... And a new Water Commissioner. So, I wanted to reset our orientation to your department. Can you just... First question, can you give us a overview of your org chart? How many supervisors you have? How many foremen? How many total FTEs?
Sure. So, we have two supervisors in the Water and Sewer Department, and we have a total of three foremen. Two of their primary duties are revolving around the Water Division, one around the Sewer Division. Terms of total FTEs...
Ballpark is fine.
I'd have to say around 30 or so, but that includes operational staff and then clerical and billing staff. So, we have... Sewer Division has five. We have four in billing. We have one, two, three, four... Four in meter reading and backflow inspection, and I'd say about a dozen or so in the water operations.
Thank you. Second question. Maintenance of vehicles. Does the DPW maintain your vehicles? Does the Water Department maintain its vehicles, or do you use a third party?
DPW does most of the maintenance. In fact, the way that the Fleet Garage is set up is that there are three to four mechanics at one given time, and then the budget for staffing and for parts and materials is shared. for parts and materials is shared. If there are, if there is work that cannot be done in-house, such a specialty work, then we do send it out. Uh, but that's the same for, for all equipment, whether or not it's, uh, streets and parks or, or water sewer.
I appreciate it. Told you it'd be pretty straightforward and a hundred thousand foot. Um, I had questions regarding catch basins, but I, I think Mr. Lepin addressed that. Uh, I would just ask, do you, if I have a catch basin front of my house, how often would it be cleaned on average, regardless of where I lived in the city? Every other year, every third year, every year, as needed?
So not every catch basin is treated equally. Some are cleaned, uh, you know, a couple of times a year, some are cleaned once every five years. And it just depends on, on the amount of debris that we see entering the catch basin. So just to put in perspective, there are four thousand four hundred catch basins in the city. Uh, on a good day, you could clean a dozen or so of them.
A dozen?
Yes.
See the five-year rotation. Um, two more questions. Bear with me, colleagues. I appreciate it. Through you, Mr. President, Chairman rather. Um, I'll actually, I'll hold it for the DPW Director when the time is appropriate. Uh, my final question for you. Um, last year, we, um, DEP, the state DEP, uh, required that we send out a letter to every home in the city of Lawrence telling them that we had phoned a minimum requirement of parts of lead per X amount of gallons of water. And, um, at the time, it was explained to me that this was, and I think to all of our colleagues at a full council meeting, that, um, the number was, you know, one whatever per million and it was just marginally over that data. That's a very cumbersome way that I described it. It was not articulate. I apologize. But this leads, this lead work you want to do, the lead service replacement project, is this tied to that? And if so, does this, um, will, is the intention to satisfy the DEP and stop that?
Yes. Uh, depends on how much time you have, I can elaborate, but, um, the, the intent is to satisfy the DEP. I, I will say that since that enforcement action was taken place and, and those notice, those notices were sent out to the homeowners, we've actually undergone another round of sampling and we've actually exceeded the, uh, the standards. Uh, so I have to report that we've actually passed with flying colors in that case. Uh, so we're back in compliance. But it is our intent to get, to get ahead of these, uh, these lead services. Again, there's such a small number, we're talking about one percent citywide, that we really want to do everything we can to motivate the business owners, the homeowner, mostly homeowners that have these lead services and help them financially if that's, you know, if need be, to get them replaced. Um, you know, when, when we talk about exceedances, we're talking about, you know, we're testing, um, you know, thirty homes and if we get three of those that fail, uh, it's only ten percent failure, but it, it's considered that, you know, that we're failing. Uh, as, as long as, if we're below the ninetieth percentile, then, um, we're failing. So we're talking about, you know, three or four homes out of twelve thousand five hundred homes. So it's a very, very small amount. Uh, and the exceedance is, so right now, the standard is fifteen parts per billion, uh, so which is very, very small. Uh, and even one, even exceedance, you know, sixteen parts per billion is considered failing. Uh, so I guess, point I'm trying to make is it's not as large as a problem as people may believe that it is. Uh, and I think, I think that by approving three hundred thousand dollars to address these, we're sending a strong message to homeowners and to DEP that, you know, we, we are taking this issue very seriously.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And if I could, um, ask Mr. Hackus to come to the podium. Thank you, Mr. Peña.
Sure.
Director Hackus, simple one question. It's loosely related to this only because, um, Public Works has brought up and we were talking catch basins. Do we use sand during the winter to address?
Very limited locations.
Very limited?
And, and just in, so you can think orders of magnitude. In any given year, we may use between five to seven thousand tons of salt, depending on the type of winter we get. We may order maybe two hundred tons of salt. So we primarily use it for the barrels that are sometimes provided, to mix it with the salt so it doesn't freeze. Um, as you probably know, when the salt with the moisture gets in there, it becomes lumps so you can't get it out. Sometimes we mix it with the sand so it's easier to, to get out. But in terms of our roadways, no, we do not use sand.
And through you, Mr. Chairman, is the intention to save the catch basins from having to be cleaned more often or is it just out of operational appropriateness that we just use salt?
It's more from an operational public safety perspective. Um, you know, some of my other colleagues and I know the cities and towns, you know, have varying degrees of opinions about the value of sand versus salt. Some believe there is a psychological effect of seeing sand on the road. People feel it's safer. People feel that it has better traction. There's a lot of debate about that. Um, for the level of traffic that we get in the city, uh, sand provides very limited to almost no effect in terms of providing traction or better safety, uh, of better street traffic on the surface, which is why we, we stick to get the salt.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hackus. And on behalf of my constituents, I want to say thank you for the last two evenings. A lot of salt only has gone down. It's gone down early and, um, I think the streets have, have been, uh, much safer because of your efforts, your, your department's efforts. So thank you to your, your unit. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilors. I'll make sure I pass the message along to the team members.
Please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other members? Mr. Piano?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my question was kind of following up, um, what Councilor Abdu was speaking about. With Colonial Heights, uh, you know, I know that you're proposing to, to do this, are there any other sort of communities that need this type of rehabilitation?
Yes. Uh, there are several communities that are in need. Some of them have been addressed. Some of them are, they're ongoing. Fortunately, we have other funding sources, um, for, for those efforts. Um, so off the top of my head, there are several areas in Prospect Hill where we are doing some work. There are areas in, um, South Lawrence East, uh, that we're doing, we're still continuing doing some work, including South Union Street, um, areas in, you know, in this neighborhood and the downtown area, including Jackson Street, Methuen Street, um, off the top of my head, um, and then some areas in South Lawrence West, not necessarily the Mount Vernon area, um, but South Broadway, State Street, um, trying to think of, uh, it's one of the C's, Clifton Street, which I believe is Mount Vernon, actually.
And Mr. Peña, those, those are, um, areas that you're, you're currently working on or just you're just listing off areas that we're working on and we need to work on?
Uh, that we will be working on.
That we will be working on.
In 2018, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, last year and then the year before, there was a concerted effort, um, in the Tower Hill neighborhood, um, some of it in South Lawrence East. Typically, the, the areas where we see the lo, the lowest fire flow, uh, or the fire protection, um, as you recall, I'm sure you recall, there were a few, you know, a number of notable fires in the city, including, um, you know, Parker Street, Salem Street area in two thousand and eight. Um, there's a Turn Hall Fire right off of Park Street, uh, around the same time, I want to say two thousand and eight. Um, there was Hancock Street, most recently in the last five years. As of last year, there was a, a fire on Saratoga Street. We're actually planning on replacing a water main on Saratoga Street this year. Uh, so, so we have done a number of water main rehab projects in the last four years or so, um, and the intent is to continue. Unfortunately, this was, you know, the, um, Colonial Heights was something that sort of happened abruptly over the last year and the funding was not put in place for that.
Thank you. Mr. De Peña?
Oh, Mr. Hackus. Uh, congratulations. This year, I received only one complaint about snow removal. I, you, you department make a good job and I want to say, thank you. And, um, I have a question. I see you have a one, a street sweeper. It's only one machine or two machine?
It's only one machine.
It's only one ma, that's a price for only one machine?
Yes.
How many machines you have available right now in the city?
We have three, uh, but only one or two operational in a given time. We, we use one for stock for repairs so we can use it to repair the one that's currently operational.
How many machine work right now? Hundred percent or fifty percent system?
One fifty percent of the time, the other one a hundred percent of the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. I, just, it's more like city trivia. We have four hundred catch basins in the city. How many fire hydrants?
About twelve hundred.
Just curious. All right. Uh, is there any, is there a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, send to the full council with a favorable recommendation?
Second. Which has been made. It's the second. Any further discussion? Here none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Peña.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item is document fourteen eighteen, supplemental order regarding the application of a bond premium introduced to the council by Mr. Ionello. Mr. Ionello, get back.
Evening, Councilors. Uh, I'm here with, uh, City Treasurer Kelly Oaks. Uh, just want to make sure everybody's met Kelly. Kelly's been here for about a year or so. This is really an item for her. It's a, um, to correct, uh, previous, uh, bond issues that we've, uh, we've issued came with, uh, some of them are sold with a bond premium and, uh, with the Modernization Act last year, uh, we need to, Bond Council asked us, asked us to take this, uh, perfunctory vote, if you will, uh, that allows us to use the, uh, the excess premiums to reduce the debt, um, owed on the bonds. So there's a, uh, brief cover letter from me and then an actual, uh, bond order that we are asking the clerk to read into the council's minutes and, um, to just, uh, correct, uh, to reflect the change in the law we issued debt prior to a change in the law, and I think it was November sixth of two thousand and sixteen. And so this, uh, will allow us to use those proceeds and reduce the, uh, permanent debt that was financed.
So, uh, just help, help me understand a little bit better. So this is already bonds that we've already approved and now we're looking to change, the law has changed recently. There needs to be a change in the language so that we're able to expend the monies for other items beyond what was originally proposed?
Or reduce, or, or in essence, reduce the, uh, if there's a, uh, an excess premium in any of the bonds that we've issued prior to the Modernization Act, uh, we can use that bond premium to repay the note or repay the bonds.
Help me understand, define bond premium, please, if you don't mind. What is a bond premium?
A bond premium, uh, when we, um, uh, we usually, when we sell bonds, which we do a couple of times a year, uh, we always ask, um, our financial advisor always, uh, requires that the, uh, bidders on our bond and they publicly bid, um, uh, when they submit their bonds, we ask that they cover the approximate cost of what the issuance of those bonds will be. There's Bond Council, there's the financial, there's Moody's and S and P charges us to give us a rating. Uh, so there's about, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand sometimes, depending on the amount of the bonds and, uh, and costs. So we always ask for the, the buyer of our bonds to pay a bond premium, uh, an estimated amount. And then we pay all those costs out of that bond premium and this will allow us to take any excess that's left, left over and just reduce the, the note or the mortgage, if you will.
Okay.
So it's a simple, uh, it's not, uh, there's no public hearings required and I can put that in the cover letter as most bond orders, uh, authorizations have to have public hearings. This is just a, a vote that requires a simple majority vote of the city council.
And this is for all our bonds?
This is, all the bonds that were issued after that note, the last couple of years or a last year and a half, we already have this language in the body of those bonds. So this is a, a cover, um, this authorization covers any previously issued bonds that didn't have this, this particular sentence in that bond authorization.
And what was the, what was the cutoff date again?
Uh, I believe it's November, uh, sixth or seventh, two thousand and sixteen. I think I have it here somewhere.
So anything prior to that, this new language will be subsequent, be included into that and we don't need to worry about anything after, to November sixth because already in the preamble, already in the document.
Right.
You already have this language in there. I get it. Uh, any other questions? Mr. Abdu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so, Mr. Ionello, if you could simplify it for us. Um, essentially, this is like asking the buyer of the bonds, if I could, uh, use real estate as an example, it'd be like asking the buyer to pay the closing costs.
Right. That's correct. That's correct.
But then ultimately, we will pay them back for purchasing or for paying those costs?
That's right. In other words, if we sell, um, if we're, uh, we're going to be selling, uh, bonds on, um, March one, we have, uh, some deficit notes, uh, that are going to be repaid, about eight million dollars worth and we'll ask, uh, people to buy those bonds for eight million and, uh, and we'll have, say, fifty to a hundred thousand estimated costs. So we'll ask them to pay eight million, one hundred thousand, and that's what we're, we will repay, uh, when we, when we repay those notes. So we do repay the premium. It's just that at least we don't have to come out of pocket for the costs upfront.
Uh, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, i- is that standard practice in the Commonwealth?
Pretty much, uh, for, uh, I mean, we could opt to pay it, uh, budget, uh, put the, uh, bond, uh, issuance costs in our budget and, uh, um, but it would be a, uh, an additional cost on the operating budget.
Sure. Those, those services are going, those service costs are going towards capital expenditure, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ionello. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation?
Second.
Which has been made. It's been seconded. If there are no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know the ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, we have, uh, other items on the agenda as well. I'm not sure if, uh, there's one here on three ninety-eight seventeen, DPW Recycling Dividends Program Grant. Is that something that should be moved this evening, Mr. Hackus?
Yes. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yes, that is an item, um, that we should be, uh, taken out of order so we can take it up for debate. Um, it's an acceptance of a twenty-eight thousand dollar grant from the Department of Environmental Protection for recycling efforts undertaken, uh, on the city of Lawrence.
What are you, send yourself? Yeah, I gotta recuse myself. So I'm going to recuse myself because it is a grant from an agency that I work for and I'm going to pass the gavel on to the vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at this time, I would ask that there be a motion to take this off of the table?
Simult.
Motion by Council Piano. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second by Council De Peña. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Um, if you would, Mr. Hackus, will you just describe, uh, the Green Team program to us? And is that the same Green Team, um, folks that work with, uh, some of the nonprofits in town or is this, uh, education-based solely Green Team?
Yes. The Green Team, um, it works with, uh, members of the school department, particularly with the, some of the teachers. It's a stipend that's paid to them specifically to engage the students, uh, with recycling efforts. Um, i- i- if you may remember, uh, we came before the council, um, sometime last year with the presentations from the members of the Green Team of the Arlington School, um, showing a quick video about recycling facts and what are they doing to bring the recycling to the community and, you know, hopefully bringing that message to their parents back at home and how to properly recycle. So a portion of this grant will be used to fund, uh, part of that program within the school department.
Uh, I do recall, I, it was a very good presentation by the, uh, both the children and the staff. Um, and, I, I mean, Green Team is synonymous with virtually any recycling or environmental effort. Do they, do they just work exclusively within the schools or do they go out and work within the community outside of the education effort?
Most of it's based on the educational settings. Uh, the goal, um, behind this program, um, it is for, to create that atmosphere, that environment of recycling efforts within the school community. Hopefully, you know, the, the, the children can be taking it back to their parents and sort of express that message around organically, um, through, you know, through, through educational efforts and both taking it back to their families. To answer the question simply, no, they do not go out into the streets educating the public, you know, that some of these are middle scooters, whatnot, so we would be hesitant to put them in that position.
My final question, then I want to turn it over to my colleagues, and maybe it was a better question for Mr. Ionello, but I'm sure you can answer it. Do we, does the Department of Public Works pay those educators directly? Or do we just ISA the money over the school department and they run the program?
I, yeah, that would be a question for Mr. Ionello, I'm not really sure how the transfer funds happen from the department. I know that they're paid for, specific for the teachers and some educational materials that they use. How exactly that payment happens, I'd have to check with the director Ionello.
Thank you, appreciate it. Other councilors, Council Piano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, so let me start off, looking at this, this looks, you know, this looks great. I actually, when I was, my senior year of high school, I actually started the recycling programs at Lawrence Public Schools with Caroline Gantley. So I think it's important to educate students, because students educate parents. But before I talk about sort of, you know, trying to get more into specifics about what this grant does, I'm wondering, can this grant be used for something else than giving this money to the Green Team? Like, can DPW use it to educate the community more on, on recycling? Or is it just specifically a grant that's dealing with youth?
No, it is not, this particular grant program, in comparison to other grants, is actually, based on the dividends program, it's actually a grant given to the city for work already undertaken, not for work that will be happening in the future. So it's actually a reward for good behavior in the city on the recycling efforts that it has undertaken. We've identified the biggest areas where we feel that we have the most impact, and one of them being the Green Team, but it's not the sole part. We have twenty-eight thousand dollars under this grant, for which nine, twelve thousand of it is used for the school Green Team purposes. Nine thousand dollars is extended to be used for additional household, households waste day, which we offer throughout the summers, and the rest of it is intended to purchase.
I'm sorry, Director, you said nine thousand dollars is used for what, can you repeat that?
Household households wasting, it's part, it's part of the recycling efforts that the city offers. We open during the months of April to October, every other Saturday, we allow the residents with proof of residency to bring over to the DPW yard some of the household, households waste that you can dispose of by regular trash at no cost to them. So some of this money will be used to enhance that effort that we're currently undertaking. The rest of it will be used for promotional materials for recycling, so such flyers, mailers, or the, or hopefully the use of some multi-bags to have some recycling labels into them. So any kind of promotional material that we can use it to enhance that recycling effort that we undertake, will be using this as a fun part of that program.
So, Director Hackus, so fifteen thousand dollars on promotional materials?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand dollars, okay, so that's nine, seven, sixteen, that's twenty, and there's eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand, it's twelve thousand dollars for the school Green Team, nine thousand for household, households waste day efforts, and seven thousand for the flyers and mailers.
Okay, and giving this twelve thousand dollars to the Green Team, what do we expect them to do?
Mostly it's educational efforts for the children, showing exactly why it's important to recycle. We provide some recycling bins to them, we provide educational materials to support them in that effort. At the end of the process, they make a nice little video to show exactly what their efforts have been. We show that to the school as well, and hopefully that, you know, the rest of the school can also bring that message over home to their parents as well.
How many children does the Green Team serve?
It's about twelve to fifteen, give and take, and also a few teachers as well are part of that effort.
Twelve to fifteen. I'm sorry?
Here with me just a moment. Here, I got your dollars, a moment. Bill, we're having video issues. It's frozen. Is this frozen, Bill? Frozen. Okay, thank you. Mr. Piano, please continue, just let me advise those at home that wondered, we just had a technical difficulty, want to make sure you can get the whole program, and get Mr. Piano's questions and Mr. Hackus' answers.
I thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, so I think the discussion was around the Green Team, what they do. You said that there was a twelve to fifteen students, including teachers there, and twelve thousand is given to them, and essentially, I'm just trying to get a sense of what they do with the twelve thousand dollars.
It's used to pay for, stipend for the, for the, for the teachers, and also to pay for educational materials. Is it not part of the job description, so it's an effort for them to undertake this as additional duties during their workday so they can teach its own recycling efforts?
Is this year-round?
As long as we get the grant, yes, which we always expect to get them every year. We have been getting them for the last five or six years, I believe. So we are very proactive in trying to reach out for as much money as possible for recycling efforts. We have a member of DEP that works very closely with us to try to guide us and coach us through the, through the grant process, and she makes sure that we apply for it every year and we try to get it.
Okay, I'm just, so I, I think one of the things that's missing in our community is more education with folks to understand, not just the importance of recycling, but just like what they can recycle. You know, a lot of people, you know, have complaints that like, oh, like, we wish we could throw away more stuff. And, you know, if they understood how they could recycle, they wouldn't be having this issue. So, you know, I'm always wondering, what can we do to not just train people, but create more energy in different communities that they can train themselves and, you know, be, you know, more competitive? I'm looking at, at, you know, sort of like this grant, I'm like, oh, that's, that might be a good opportunity to, you know, create an incentive between different neighborhood associations, you know, who, who's able to recycle the most, or I don't know, something like that, where the communities that recycle more, or have shown the most growth, get something out of it. And, and they see the benefits outside of, you know, we understand that it's better for the environment, it's also, you know, makes it more affordable for the, for the city. You know, I'm wondering if, granted, I'm new, and it sounds like this is, well, let me ask, has this been given before to the Green Team, or this is the first time?
No, this has been given before to the Green Team.
Okay, so, I'll, my last question, when you were taking into account how you were going to use the twenty-eight thousand dollars and how it was going to be divvied out, what made you stick to the Green Team outside of, you know, some other idea? Or were there other ideas that might have been talked about?
Yeah, we feel that the recycling Green Team, we're trying to look at educational component of the recycling process. You know, there are multiple different ways we can go about this, you know, we can hold seminars, we can do flyers, we can put it on social media, there are a lot of different things to get the message out to the community. Recycling efforts itself, it's all about changing behavior. Trying to, you know, measure the impact that you get, depending on the type of educational media that you get to them, it, it's a very finicky thing, because how are you going to get, how do you measure the gauge for your message that you're trying to get to the community? We feel that, starting from the home, meaning the message coming from the children back to the adults and teaching them how to do it, we feel that it has a much larger impact than spending twenty-eight thousand dollars on a social media campaign, blanketing the city with flyers and whatnot. I'm not saying that that's ineffective, but we feel just, based on the pot of money that we have, we feel that this is how we can make the most impact throughout the, throughout the city. There are certainly, we do have other sources of funding that are available for those type of projects that you just mentioned. We try to use it for this grant in particular, because it allows the flexibility that you can use the money to pay for stipends for the, for the, for the school, for the teachers. All the items that are funded through the regular operating budget in the department that we use for advertising are more restricted than what we can use them for. Going back again, why we want to use it for the Green Team is because of the flexibility of the grant program, that we can use it for anything as long as it's geared towards supporting a recycling effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piano, Mr. DePena?
Yes, thank you, Vice President. Mr. Hackus, for many year, many year, I listen, everybody in the city, a different photo. Recycling is very important, everybody know, recycling is very important for the planet, for, for the city, because it's very important, but I have a question. Mr. Piano, I listen, he said, education, I know that education is very important, but education includes money. And you budget for the year nineteen eighteen include enough money for recycling? You think the budget is enough?
One of the advantages that...
For create a good opportunity for everybody receive information in the house?
Yes, we do have money in, in, in the operating budget for advertising, which we use in different, various different ways. This year, what we're trying to develop, which we had not done in the past, is an integrated pamphlet that has all of the city's recycling and trash information. One of the things that I found when I got here is that there's a lot of services available to the residents in terms of how to properly dispose of bulk items, households waste, trash, and recycling. That information was very segregated, and it was not concentrated into one place where it's easily accessible to everybody. So we undertook a small project of just simply condensing all this information in one pamphlet that's easy to use, that we want to either use it on social media or mail it out to residents, so they know who to call to get rid of mattress, how to properly recycle, which days you recycle, what items you recycle, which is the most important thing, and how to keep it out of your trash. So there is money right now in the operating budget to support part of that effort. One of the other advantages that we have in the recycling program is that there is a lot of support out there from different entities, such as Mass DEP, to support different recycling efforts. This year, the city has been allotted an additional, about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in grants towards the recycling efforts. Those are more restricted of use, one of them is to actually fund a full-time position for a waste enforcement coordinator, which is essentially a person that we want to use to send out to the community, be the foots in the ground, and just teach people how to properly recycle, and in some locations, where necessary, maybe even find people when they're not properly recycling. The other part of that grant program is also, we get money to buy additional barrels for recycling. One of the biggest complaints that I've heard through my department is that people want to recycle more, but they don't have the capability to do so, meaning the means of how to recycle, or where we dispose of the recycling. We used to, in the past, you know, distribute those little trash blue bins, recycling bins that you see out there, we found that while the efforts were well-intentioned, they were probably one of the biggest sources of littering in the city, especially in windy days, they were just kind of blew away through the street and it caused a lot of littering. So what we want to do is, we want to try to provide to the residents an actual, an enclosed barrel, strictly dedicated for recycling. We've seen a lot of different other communities where you have your trash bin, and you also have your recycling bin. They're both equal, except that one may be a little bit larger, or a different color, at least it clearly identifies as being a recycling. So those are the things we're currently actively working right now through DEP and also through the city, trying to see how we can better use that money. We also get about sixty thousand dollars per year from our, our, our materials recycling facility, which is waste management. We were able to write into their contract that for every year that we dispose of materials with them, we can get about sixty thousand dollars per year to use towards recycling efforts. So we use also part of that money to support additional flyering, to pay for materials, to pay for disposal of some recyclables that are in the city yard. So I guess what I'm trying to get with this is that although the funds that we have in the operating budget may be limited, there are other sources and pots of money that we've been able to apply for to increase the operations and support a bigger and more robust recycling program. Right now, we're in the process of also hiring a recycling coordinator. Our previous coordinator left the city and is no longer with us. So with this new person coming aboard, we hope to use it, you know, have fresh ideas of how we can better educate the community, you know, for the recycling efforts.
But when the city send a big container for, for regular trash, and send a small container for recycling, send a romance, because, send the same container. Another question. How many people our recycling department have it right now?
We have one position funded, it's currently unfilled because it's vacant, and we're currently hiring. So on the regular operating budget, we have one person on the recycling division.
Not enough, I think you need more person, but you that, you that to the department, that's, that's your, thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, just a question, perhaps on procedure. Is it possible to, to amend the motion and remove a certain portion, like remove like the twelve thousand from the Green Team? And if, if that is possible, and that does happen, does that mean that you can't use that money? Or could you come back and with a different proposal?
So, the motion before us is to, typically it says to accept the money.
So it, it's, Mr. Vice Chair, it sounds like we have received the money, and what they're looking for is a waiver, yeah, to, to spend it.
So I would suggest to you that, yes, the, the motion could be worded, could be worded, amended language could be approved and sent to the full council, seeing that as it would be advertised and a public hearing held with that language adjusted. So yes, you could amend it.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to make that motion.
So you articulate?
Sure, so I, I would like to make a motion that we, well, let me go back to the, to the agenda. To reduce twelve thousand dollars from twenty-eight, so that's, to reduce that motion to sixteen thousand, and essentially remove the twelve thousand dollars that would go to, to the Green Team.
Mr. Piano has made a motion to send to the full council for favorable recommendation this item minus twelve thousand dollars, which was intended for the Green Team.
Correct.
A second, Monsieur.
There's a second, discussion.
So my reasoning behind this is, while part of me is wondering, you know, what else we could do with this, I understand that the department wants to move in this direction. Having worked with similar programs like this, where you're giving grants to different nonprofits, youth, usually you get a, a clearer picture of what exactly is, they're going to be using the money for. So for example, one of the things that I, I look for really quickly is like, alright, so if we're spending twelve thousand dollars, how many students is this affecting? From what I hear is twelve to fifteen, so a thousand dollars per student, to me, doesn't sound like a good use of money. Now, perhaps that it is, but for, for me to, to strongly support, you know, an initiative like that, I would have to understand what it is that these kids are going to be doing, you know, like what the value and what the impact is when it comes to that. If it's only fifteen kids are being trained for twelve thousand, I think you could get a, you know, a better bang for your buck and spend that with the Lawrence Public School system, like develop some type of program with Lawrence Public School system and be able to impact more youth. You know, so that's my thought frame behind it, I, I don't necessarily, while, you know, I'm under the idea that maybe we could do something else, I don't necessarily think that this is a bad idea, I just need to have a better understanding of how that money's going to be used and how these kids are going to be impacted, you know, and perhaps these twelve kids are training, you know, twenty kids, but, you know, from what I'm seeing in front of me, I don't see that.
Thank you, Mr. Piano, Mr. DePena?
Short question. You, you have a, what percent, right now, recycling in Lauren, thirty percent, twenty, eighteen?
The, the average recycling rate for the city hovers between nine to ten percent right now.
Ten percent?
Yes.
What percent recycling two years ago, or three years ago?
The last one I looked at the...
I know you, you're in a position only year and a half, but you have idea three years ago, two years ago, what percent, what's the rate percent?
Yes, well, we, we did analysis of our recycling data going back to two thousand and nine, two thousand and two, actually. The trend line has been consistent, I think we went from a percentage of about three to four to now about hovering ten percent, and has been constant probably for the last four years, it's been constant at ten percent. The encouraging thing that we've seen with that trend line is that, while we have seen an increase in the trash that we dispose of, concurrently, that recycling rate has still consistent. So, yes, people are dumping more trash, but they're also recycling more. So the percentage rate is staying the same, but the actual amount of recycling that we do has actually increased, because the trash has increased, the population has increased, but at the same time, the recycling tonnage has still has increased. because the trash has increased, the population has increased, but at the same time, the recycling tonnage itself has increased. And when you're measuring actual dollar values of the recycling efforts, that's the number that matters. Much more than percentages, it's actual recycled tonnage that you diverted from the waste stream.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePena. With respect to this amended motion, I would hearken back to the demonstration that was provided by the Arlington School Green Team. That was just a portion of the Lawrence Public Schools Green Team?
Yes, that was, that was just, you know, a sample of what exactly this team had been doing during that point in time. You know, although when I go back to the twelve number and when I mention that number, we're talking about specifically the group of kids that are being used to actually outreach more to the community. So they're not just, these are not just spending twelve thousand dollars and only twelve children, in this case, are receiving that information. We train them into how to properly recycle so they can go with that message out to not just the school and the parents, but also some neighborhood groups. So they're our recycling ambassadors, for lack of a better term.
Organizers.
Excuse me?
The way I understood them, they were like organizers and they would organize their fellow students. And I would really encourage the new counselors to certainly try and get a copy of that video that they showed for us back in October or September, whatever month that was. I was rather skeptical of the program beforehand. I did appreciate what they, that that video was pretty resourceful and what they're doing. It might be helpful if we had metrics from the LPS, the Lawrence Public Schools, as to, you know, what they're doing. It would probably be helpful to not only Counsel Piano, but all of us. But I suppose that's a question we could pose to the school system.
I can have the actual, one of the ambassadors that runs the day-to-day of the green team there at the full council meeting and give you a more full, broad, detailed explanation of how they intend to use all that money.
Counsel Piano?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I would say like, what I'd be interested is something written down. I think metrics are important, especially if they've been receiving this grant. You know, they received it last year and, you know, potentially they might receive it again next year. You know, how do you compare that they're actually, that this is creating an impact? So I think, you know, so I'm aware of the green team, that this is the green team with, what's the name? Is it with Lawrence Public Schools or is it with the nonprofit that deals with the environment?
Groundworks?
Or is it with Groundworks?
It is not with Groundworks, it's with Lawrence Public Schools.
Lawrence Public Schools, okay. So I'd be interested in sort of, like, they might, did they present to you like, that they had to fill out like a grant, a proposal or something like that in order to get this?
No, they're not. They have been getting this for the past four, probably four or five years. They've been getting this for quite a while. What we hear, the feedback that we hear from the students and the teachers and also the school community, is that it impacts them a lot. We actually send it out not just to this school, but to other schools as well. One of my main themes that I try to, you know, impact is that it's important for us to teach the residents how to recycle, but if we don't start in-house within the city itself, we're not going to get there unless we can show through our own efforts that, hey, we are recycling. So we use them as well to go to other teachers, to other areas of the Lawrence Public School system to teach them how to properly recycle and educate them in that process as well.
So I think I'm a hundred percent down with the mission. In order for me to feel comfortable being like, you know, yes, let's do this, I would want to see sort of what their plan was for the year, like the metrics, especially. Now you're saying that they've been receiving for the last four or five years. Just so, you know, even yourself, you can get a better understanding of what they're doing and, you know, ways that they might themselves might be able to have a bigger impact within the schools and with the community. I would agree, you know, like years ago when we started putting recycling to the schools, it was with the idea that the students, you know, if we taught the students, the students would then teach the parents, which is what happened. And I think that's why there's been such a big impact since two thousand and two when it comes to recycling is because the parents know what's going on because the students taught them. So I'm not against the idea. I just feel uncomfortable sort of voting on a project without seeing the, a general perspective of what they're going to do.
So, Mr. Piano, if you, so actually, before I ask you, Counselor Director Hackas, what is the, what is your need, what is the timeline on this as far as critical dates? If we were to not take motion?
The important days to keep in mind is that these funds have to be expended this year.
Fiscal year.
Yes. And we also have to submit back a report to DEP as well at the end of the grant program to show it makes that where would he spend his money and give him additional information has they be required before we're able to apply for the next one.
Before we move on, clarification. Fiscal year that we're currently in, or would this be for the FY nineteen fiscal?
For calendar year.
So it's for this calendar year?
Yes.
Twelve thousand, with respect to the amended motion, twelve thousand within this calendar year?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Yes, it's twelve thousand for this calendar year.
I think you had another thought, but I cut you off from it. I apologize.
No, no, it's... Twenty-eight thousand dollars is the grant. Twelve thousand dollars is what we're using portion specifically for the school system. And just so you know, if the council decides to vote down on that specific portion, we can still use that money for other efforts. But if we don't use it, then we're going to lose it, essentially what it comes down to.
Counsel Piano?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just to make it clear, I'm not suggesting if we remove the twelve thousand, I'm not suggesting that we don't use it for the green team. I'm just suggesting that we, I'm just asking for more information. And so basically, let's work with what we already know. We're saying like, all right, these two sound like it's in the clear instead of holding it up just for the green team. That way, Director Hackas can come, you know, at the next meeting and kind of present us with the information that at least I'm looking for, which I think is regular information that we should be asking anytime we're dealing with a grant. You know, we have to figure out a way how to judge, you know, year to year, how these groups are doing and how they're spending the money and the impact that they're creating.
Mr. Piano, I totally agree with you with respect to data-driven, you know, results and having data. So I definitely could support that going forward. What I'm trying to do here is if we get that in, what I'm trying to is determine my own position for the vote. And that is if we were to move this forward tonight without the twelve thousand, we received the data at the full council and it's pleasantly, not surprising, but it affirms that the green team has been spending the twelve thousand wisely. We cannot then add it, we could not then amend the motion at the full council that night because it has to be published, has to be advertised appropriately. Counsel Piano?
Mr. Vice Chair, thank you. If this was an issue where, you know, I thought the money needed to be spent in the next two or three months, I would go sort of, you know, I would go along with that and say like, oh, we'll deal with it in the full council. But since this is the entire calendar year and we have eleven more months to spend this money, I don't necessarily see the rush, you know, to ask. Essentially, I'd like to give Director Hackas more time to sort of create, because I am sure that if this green team had not created a proposal or has even thought about any of this in the last four years, this is something that it'd be hard to do in just a few days. That they would need a couple of weeks to just at least think through what it is that they're going to be proposing. I would think, I don't know.
No, I understand. What I, I guess I was sold on the presentation we were provided last fall that they are producing. So I'm not suggesting that... I guess I was, with the presentation we were provided last fall, I was content with the ROI, the return on investment that we were making based on what they were doing. So I guess what I will do is not to belabor this vote, let's get on with the vote. I will, we'll get it up to the full council and see what we get for a response to your request. So are there any further questions with respect to the amended motion? That motion is to send with a favorable recommendation the amount of sixteen thousand dollars for the purposes of the green team.
For the purpose of the household waste day and the promotional materials. Removing the twelve thousand dollars that was designated from the green team out of this grant.
What he said. Did you get that? We'll take the time to get it right now. You're good?
Yeah, just take all the twelve thousand dollars from the green team, but the others stay.
Very good. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Please note the chair votes present. I vote present on that one. So it's two yeses and a present. So with that, it moves up to the full council with a favorable recommendation as amended. And now we welcome back our chairman.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hack.
Is there anything else on the agenda that we want to take up this evening? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.